Good evening on this rainy afternoon in... First, is it June?
Yes, it's June.
This is the first day of June, yeah. Welcome to the meeting of the Board Committee of Faculty, Staff and Administration. I'd like to move to the first action item, approval of the minutes of April 6, 2015. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you. We will now move to the policy calendar. We have two items added on our calendar today, one policy matter and one appointment. Also, due to a conflict in scheduling, we will be moving certain items around to facilitate the fact that we have multiple meetings going on today. I will first call on Dr. Julia Rigby, interim Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost, to present items 1B7 through 1B9, appointments of three new very distinguished professors.
Thank you. The first one is resolved that the Board of Trustees of City University of New York appoint Paul R. Krugman as Distinguished Professor of Economics at the Graduate Center, effective September 1, 2015, with compensation of $28,594 per annum, in addition to his regular academic salary, subject to financial ability. Professor Krugman is a Nobel Prize-winning economist and a highly influential op-ed columnist for The New York Times. He is the author or editor of 27 books and more than 200 scholarly articles, most of which focus on international trade and finance. He is being called "the most celebrated economist of his generation" for his scholarly contributions and for his many articles that reach beyond academic circles and help advance economic and political understanding in citizens worldwide. Krugman has served most recently as a professor of economics and international affairs at Princeton University. His earlier appointments include Centenary Professor at the London School of Economics and the Ford International Professor of Economics at MIT. He has also taught at Yale and Stanford Universities, and prior to that, he was the Senior International Economist for the President's Council of Economic Advisers under President Ronald Reagan. A graduate of Yale, Professor Krugman earned his doctoral degree from MIT. The Graduate Center will be well-served by Professor Krugman's appointment as Distinguished Professor. Due to the timing issues, I'm going to read all three before we move to discussion. Next is resolved that the Board of Trustees appoint Ruth Milkman as Distinguished Professor of Sociology at the Graduate Center, effective September 1, 2015, with the same compensation as with Professor Krugman, $28,594 per annum, in addition to her regular academic salary, subject to financial ability. Professor Milkman is one of the leading labor sociologists in the United States, known both for her outstanding record of publication, including more than a dozen books, many of them award-winning, and her expertise on issues related to work, labor, and gender. Her early works are considered classics in her discipline, and she continues to produce creative and innovative research that causes her academic colleagues, as well as labor activists, to look at issues in new ways. In 2013, she was the recipient of the Public Understanding of Sociology Award from the American Sociological Association, and she was recently elected president of that organization, a position that reflects her high standing in the sociological community. A graduate of Brown University, Professor Milkman earned her master's and doctoral degrees in sociology from the University of California at Berkeley, before beginning her professional career at CUNY, where she was a faculty member at Queens College and at the Graduate Center in the 1980s. After teaching sociology for more than 20 years at UCLA, where she also directed the University of California's Institute for Research and Labor and Employment, she returned to CUNY in 2009 as Professor of Sociology and as the Academic Director of the Murphy Institute for Worker Education and Labor Studies. And the third and final Distinguished Professor nomination for this evening, it's resolved that the Board of Trustees appoint Henry N. Pontell as Distinguished Professor of Sociology at John J. College of Criminal Justice. Professor Pontell is an internationally recognized scholar of sociology and criminology, whose pioneering research in white-collar crime has earned him the highest accolades of his profession. He has lectured at universities and government offices throughout the world, testified before the U.S. Senate on financial fraud, and worked with law enforcement agencies, including the FBI and the U.S. Secret Service. His collaborative engagement with the broader international criminological community, particularly in Asia, has provided an important comparative perspective for his discipline. Considered the world's foremost scholar of white-collar and corporate crime, medical fraud, and jail litigation and overcrowding, Professor Pontell is known for his prolific and high-quality scholarship and his visionary leadership. After earning his bachelor's, master's, and doctoral degrees at the State University of New York, Stony Brook, Professor Pontell spent the majority of his career as a faculty member at the University of California at Irvine. He has received many coveted academic awards, including the Gilgeys Lifetime Achievement Award, which he recently received from the White Collar Crime Research Consortium. That concludes my presentation on these three.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries, and congratulations to the university for really three outstanding appointments.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to move for a very special acknowledgement and naming opportunity. We now have an item added to our agenda, a memorial naming and honor Dr. Derek Griffith. I'd like to present item 1B10. Before I do so, I'd like to ask, and I always pronounce his name incorrectly, so forgive me, but I'd ask if John Moguluska would join me at the table as I present this naming Thank you, John. On May 12, 2015, CUNY lost a beloved colleague and leader when Dr. Derek Griffith perished in the Amtrak accident outside Philadelphia. Dr. Griffith had dedicated his life to scholarship and higher education and bettering the lives of the young people of New York City. In 2003, the university selected him to serve as founding principal and director of CUNY Prep, a school that has enabled thousands of young people who had left school to earn high-school equivalency diplomas and enter college. By creating CUNY Prep, Dr. Griffith, I love calling him Dr. Griffith, altered the educational landscape in New York City, and CUNY Prep became a model for re-engaging young people and providing supportive pathways to college for them. In 2010, Dr. Griffith joined Medgar Evers College as Assistant Provost and was serving as the college dean of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management at the time of his untimely death. He earned his doctorate in Urban Education from the CUNY Graduate Center just one month before his passing and received his degrees postmortem on May 27, 2015. In recognition of Dr. Griffith's dedicated service to CUNY and of the thousands of young lives he transformed, the Board is being asked to rename the CUNY Preparatory School in his honor, henceforth to be known as the Dr. Derek Griffith CUNY Preparatory School. It is my honor, and I asked John to join us because my first introduction, one of my first introductions to the City University of New York was with Derek and John. And so, on behalf of all of us who knew Derek and mourned his passing, I'd like to call for a vote for the approval of the naming of the Dr. Derek Griffith CUNY Preparatory School. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I just want to say that at the board meeting, Derek's family will join us. Jay, you want to give us an update on who will be joining us at the board meeting?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did speak with Derek's son in advance of this meeting, so he would know that this was on the board committee calendar, and he will be attending the board meeting, which is on June 29, starts at 4:30 p.m., along with his grandmother, who many of us met, of course, you know, at the recent wake and funeral services that were held in the Bronx, which was an absolutely beautiful, beautiful service, and we'll have the opportunity to be with him at that time. I also want to report that the chancellor informed the city council on Friday of this recommendation, and it was extremely well-received, not only by the city council members, but by many in the audience who knew Derek. Of course, as was pointed out to me by Dr. Barker, tomorrow is the Medgar Evers College graduation, and news of the board committee's action today, it seems to me, will be shared with many of Derek's admirers.
Thank you. Are there any other comments that anyone would like to make?
Yeah, I just have one comment, that this is a really worthy tribute, you know, to Derek and his body of work, what he stood for. I mean, it's great that we can have this as a monument, to speak to what he valued so much, and so I'm totally, totally, of course, in support of this. And I think it sends a good message to individuals throughout the college community, or to individuals who support and who do a number of the things that he did from a standpoint of academic excellence. You know, it's just a wonderful tribute, so I'm just glad that we're making this move.
Thank you. So, thank you, and as I think Derek embodied what I think is the true spirit of the City University of New York, and thank you, chancellor, for allowing us to have this very special tribute. So, thank you very much to all. Thank you. We'll now move on, continue with our return to the regular order of the agenda. I'll call on Vice Chancellor Waters to present items 1B1.
Item 1B1 is a resolution to approve amendments to the university's optional retirement plan and adoption of a restated optional retirement plan document. Madam Chair and members of the board committee on faculty, staff, and administration, I want to begin by giving you some background on item 1B1 and explain in some detail the reasons the board is being asked to take this action. The CUNY Optional Retirement Plan, which I will refer to interchangeably as the ORP or the PLAN, was established in 1964 under Article 125(a) of the New York Education Law in compliance with the requirements of Section 403(b) of the Internal Revenue Code, hereafter known as the IRC. The purpose of the plan is to provide retirement and death benefits to eligible participants and their beneficiaries. In 1990, because of changes in the tax law, CUNY's ORP was converted to a qualified plan under IRC Section 401(a), and although the benefits provided to university employees under the qualified CUNY ORP were identical to those provided under the 403(b) ORP, the new plan was subject to a number of different rules under the IRC. One of those rules is that a qualified ORP be administered according to the terms of a written plan document. When CUNY's ORP was converted to a qualified plan in 1990, a plan document was drafted, setting forth in detail how CUNY would operate the plan in accordance with pertinent IRS guidelines and legislative requirements. However, it does not appear that the board formally adopted the document at that time. Over the years, various changes were made to the tax law and to the education law that affected CUNY's ORP and accordingly should have been incorporated into the plan document. While the ORP's operation was consistently modified to reflect those changes, the draft plan document was not amended. I should note here that the amendments required by the changes in the tax law do not affect the level of benefits under the ORP or other ORP design features that are within the purview of New York City and New York State. What I present to the board committee today is an entirely rewritten plan document that ensures that our ORP is fully current with all relevant IRC provisions and changes to the education law. I am also pleased to advise you that the university requested a determination letter for its newly restated plan document, and last month, the IRS granted our request contingent on our completing the correction process, which includes formal adoption of the newly restated plan document and retroactive amendments by the university's board of trustees. Because the IRS's correction program stipulates that any required steps be completed within 150 days in order for the correction relief to be effective, the board needs to formally adopt the CUNY ORP plan document along with the retroactive amendments at its June meeting. Once the correction process is fully completed, the university's ORP document will be considered by the IRS to have been in full compliance with the document requirement since 1990. I want to emphasize that even though our ORP document was not previously adopted or amended, it has always been operated in compliance with relevant changes to the IRC. Madam Chair, I present item 1B1 for the committee's consideration.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Waters, and I want to congratulate her committee and her staff, who have really been working diligently on addressing these issues, and I know Professor Martell and I are working with them on some other things, but congratulations to your staff for a really outstanding job. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. I now call upon President Marsha Keyes, would you present items 1B2, amendments to the Charter of York College?
I'm pleased to present amendments to the Charter of York College's Senate. That these amendments come forward after a four-year review at the college by a committee that was staffed by faculty, staff, administrators, and students. It emerged from our last middle states back in 2008, and the amendments have been approved by the York College Senate by majority, not unanimously, but a strong majority, and they are, the explanation is thus. Basically, our Senate Charter incorporates best practices from other college governances across the country, and we believe that these amendments will facilitate the work of the committees especially. As proposed, the Charter permits the use of alternates for one committee, the Curriculum Committee, to allow that we will get approved, improve or quorum. And secondly, we want to add two new committees, a Committee on Governance, which did not exist, and a Committee on Resources. We will remove one committee on admissions, but that work will be conducted under the Committee on Academic Policy and Standards. We had robust discussion throughout a four-year period, was approved by majority of the Senate and was sent to our legal office for full review, and so I'd ask this board, this body, to approve these amendments as presented.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. We will now ask President Karen Gould to come forward and present items 1B3, the naming of the Murray Koppelmann School of Business at Brooklyn College. And I trust you will correct my pronouncing. Thank you.
It is my pleasure and absolute delight to present to you this resolution that the Board of Trustees approve the naming of the Murray Koppelmann School of Business at Brooklyn College in perpetuity. Murray Koppelmann joined the U.S. Army before attending Brooklyn College, so his days at Brooklyn College were a little delayed among his cohort, but he did graduate in 1957, earning his bachelor's degree in accounting, as you have before you. He rose rapidly in the world of finance and banking and has held many very important positions in that arena, both the, working as a CPA in his own company from '61 to '68, and then becoming Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer of D.H. Blair Company Incorporated. In 1984, he was elected president and chief academic officer, executive officer of the Manhattan-based banking firm estate Eastlake Securities, and most recently was Vice President of Asset Management at J.P. Morgan Securities. He has been a champion of Brooklyn College for the past 30 years. He's served three terms on the Brooklyn College Foundation, has chaired the Brooklyn College Hillel, and has been passionate about supporting Brooklyn College for nearly 40 years. Mr. Koppelmann supported the college in many ways, but most recently, in 2011, he gave me personally a check at a reception at my house for $2.5 million to purchase the Nostran Avenue property, which was the last remaining adjacent property near the college in order to facilitate the eventual building of a school of business, a building for the school of business on that property. But he realizes that that will take a very long time, and he may likely not be with us at the point at which that building is constructed. Therefore, he most recently has given us $8.5 million for a total of $12.5 million to Brooklyn College, which is now indicative of one of the two largest donations in the college's history, Leonard Tao being the other major donor of Brooklyn College. And with the $12.5 million, our trustees and great admirers of Mr. Koppelmann have pledged now another $2.5 million, or actually over $2.5 million, to bring the total to $15 million and change to name the school of business after Mr. Koppelmann. He will rescind his request, once the Board of Trustees approves this, to have the building on the Nostran property named after him, making that exchange. So this is a request to name the school of business at Brooklyn College after Murray Koppelmann. And what these funds will allow us to do is to pursue the accreditation of our school of business from a very strong position. As you know, as those who work at Baruch know, having an accredited business school is a real feather in your cap, but it is costly, and you do need to have travel funds for faculty and students to go to accreditation meetings, and you need endowed chairs, and you need to have the capacity, really, to support accreditation over the years. This gift of $12.5 million will now put us in a position, in fact, our reviewers at AACSB have already said this is an astounding accomplishment, and you are well on your way to accreditation at this point, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I will now call on Provost Mauricio Trevinson to present item 1B4, a naming opportunity at the City College of New York.
Thank you.
Haven't seen you in 48 hours, right?
Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to present this request to the board. Robert Askanazi came to the United States as a seven-years-old, nine-years-old child and pursued an education both at Bronx Science School of Science and received a Bachelor of Science from City College, and then eventually PhD in chemistry from the Polytechnic Institute of New York. Then he moved to the West Coast in Oregon, where he actually became the president of Oregon Freezai in 1981. During his leadership, the company did very well, and he played a very important role in the community, leading a number of boards. Both him and his wife are City College alumni, and in September 2011, they pledged $1 million to establish the Herbert and Ruth Askanazi Opportunity Fund at the college to support outstanding students in a variety of academic and professional pursuits. They go from internship to study abroad, fieldwork, attended participation at conferences. To date, they have paid more than half of the $1 million that they have pledged, and we would like to name the suite that is used by the honor students to their name.
Thank you. Have a motion for approval?
So moved.
It's been, second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service. President Fritz, please join us to present items 1B5, a naming opportunity at the College of Staten Island.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Con Edison has long been a friend of the College of Staten Island. They have a representative that serves on our foundation board, but this year, they really stepped up significantly, stepped up their giving in support of the college to provide funds for creating an active trading room floor for the school of business. About 20% of our undergraduate majors, major in business, were also taking steps to seek accreditation for that program, and having a trading room floor really puts our, you know, unparalleled opportunities for our students that are majoring in various business disciplines. The floor is there, it's active, we're going to be continuing to do some renovations to make it a real state-of-the-art facility.
Thank you. I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Interim President Martin of Bronx Community College will present item 1B6, a naming opportunity at his campus.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. There's a lot of potential at Bronx Community College for fundraising. We have a structure that was built in 1898. It is perhaps one of the most beautiful community colleges in the country, is the only national, only national landmark community college in the country, and we're beginning to make some moves in that direction. So I am very pleased to present to you today the naming of the Persian Rifles Company E8 Study Room at the Bronx Community College New Library at North Hall. This is a small room, and it's going to be named in honor of a company that was populated by NYU alums when the campus was housed New York University. They are very interested in helping the present student population of Bronx Community College, and they are starting a fundraising program specifically directed at helping students in need at Bronx Community College. So, in honor of their beginning donation of $10,700, $700, I think it is, we are naming this particular study room, which is, as I said, is a small study room in the library. It is my sincere hope that this is the beginning of a series of namings that we will have in that very beautiful new library that we have at the campus. And also, as you very well know, we're interested in going beyond that new library and working to bring individuals who happen to be interested in the social mission of Bronx Community College, but also in the beauty of its buildings, to help us continue with the mission of our college. So I hope that you can consider this as a resolution to name the Room 227 in the library as the Persian Rifles Company E8.
Thank you. And I would just say, I know the chancellor had to leave, but one of, in my conversations with him, I know that renewing and honoring that wonderful campus is a high priority of his as well, so I think congratulations in starting that process on the campus. May I have a motion for approval?
Question?
Yes.
Do you think the record ought to reflect what Persian Rifles represents?
He wants to know, can you tell us what Persian Rifles represents?
This is a society that was created by a drill team of students, and they continue to, obviously, some of them went on for military careers, and they continue to meet, and they continue to consider the campus that we have as their home, where they began their association continue to consider the campus that we have as their home, where they began their association. It is a fraternity, and it is a, well, they call it a society, because I assume that it brings more than men into the society.
Thank you. So, Ashanta Waters, would you amend the description and to include a bit of who the Persian Rifle Company is?
Okay, we'll work on amendment.
Be happy to do that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that friendly amendment, may I move, it's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions, the motion carries, and thank you for your recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now move on to the Chancellor's University Report. This completes our policy calendar. We will now move on to the Chancellor's University Report. As you can see, we have a number of appointments of senior executives at several of our colleges. We also have an added appointment, Items 1c2, 3, no, eleven, appointment of an acting provost at Hunter College. President Wallace Dean, please join us to present Items 1c1 and 1c2, two appointments at Baruch College, which we will consider together.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I come before you to propose the appointment of two executives at senior management of Baruch College. The first is David Shanton, who is eminently qualified to assume appointment as Vice President for college advancement. David Shanton has been acting as interim Vice President, acting, I should say, Vice President since September 2014. Before that, he served for a number of years as Assistant Vice President for College Advancement from 2005 to 2011. Prior to that, he was a senior consultant with the firm of Martin Lundie for three years, and also served at St. John's University for thirteen years in a similar capacity. So he is broadly experienced as a development, college advancement expert, and has very ably served Baruch College through our most recent campaign, and I am very pleased to enthusiastically recommend his appointment.
Thank you, and you can do the second one now, too.
Okay, very good. I'm also pleased to recommend the appointment of Mary Gorman as interim Vice President for Enrollment Management at Baruch College. Mary Gorman has served for twenty-eight years in senior capacity at Baruch, serving for the last fourteen, for fourteen years through, I believe, three presidents, four, sorry, four presidents, as the Chief of Staff to the president. She has been invaluable to me and to the college. She is broadly knowledgeable about every aspect of college administration, and has served in a variety of capacities as liaison to the Enrollment Management Division of Baruch College. Indeed, through her work in the performance management process and also strategic planning, she's been able to immerse herself in these details. Prior to coming to Baruch, Mary served at, for more than a decade, at NYU, and gained firsthand experience in recruiting, academic advising, retention programs, and orientation program for freshmen. So she is very well qualified to serve in interim capacity while we conduct a national search.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of these two outstanding candidates?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Well, I don't say welcome, but for your continued service to the university, would you like to address the committee?
Sure, I just would, I'm grateful for the opportunity to continue to serve Baruch College. I've been there for ten years, and it's a wonderful institution, and I also very much look forward to working with the Baruch College Fund Board, which is a terrific and very generous group of volunteers that has done so much to advance Baruch College over the years.
Thank you.
I'm also looking forward to continuing to serve Baruch College. I've been here fourteen years, and it's exciting to take on a new role with new responsibilities while at the same time returning to my roots in recruitment and student success programs. And so I'm very much looking forward to it, and I thank you for the vote of confidence.
Well, thank you for your continued service to the university. President Fritz, would you please rejoin us to introduce Items 1c3, Appointment of a Vice President for Institutional Advancement and External Affairs at the College of Staten Island?
Yes, good evening again.
Good evening.
I'm very pleased to present Ms. Katmai Osarun Hanna for your consideration as Vice President for Advancement and External Affairs. We conducted a full national search throughout this academic year. The pool was diverse, it was broad, it was deep, it was probably the best pool I've ever seen in one of our external searches. Gail Freeman and Associates was the search consultant for the firm. I know she has headed a number of other CUNY advancement searches. Ms. Osarun Hanna has over twenty-five years of experience in higher education, non-for-profit management, fundraising, marketing, communications, advocacy, alumni, and community relations. Most recently, she is finishing her service as Director of Advancement North America for the University of Queensland. She has also, before that, served as Vice President for University Advancement at New Jersey City University, and has also been Assistant Vice President for Plan Giving and Senior Major Gift Officer at New Jersey Institute of Technology. She holds a BA in International Affairs from George Washington University, credits in graduate studies in Islamic Studies and Economics from McGill University, and a certificate in Plan Giving from the College of William &amp; Mary.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. And welcome to the City University of New York, and specifically to the College of Staten Island, and would you like to address the committee?
Thank you for having me, and I'm very thrilled to join the City University of New York and the College of Staten Island, and for the confidence that President Fritz has put in me to advance the mission of the university and the college in advancing higher education and access and excellence to higher education. I'm very excited to return to this area as well, since I've been in the Washington, DC area for the past three years. I'm looking forward to this.
Well, thank you, and welcome to the university.[1090.13][1090.13][applause] May I now ask President Herzak to present three appointments at Kingsborough Community College? We will consider these appointments as a group. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Trustees. It gives me great pleasure to present for your consideration Dr. Richard Fox for the position of Vice President Institutional Effectiveness. Dr. Fox earned his PhD in Educational Psychology from the State University of New York at Buffalo, and is licensed as a psychologist from New York State. His scholarly work has appeared in journals such as American Educational Research Journal and Educational and Psychological Measurement. Dr. Fox has served in a number of increasingly responsible capacities at Kingsborough since 1985. Currently, he's our college's Dean for Institutional Effectiveness and Strategic Planning. Rick has recently acquired additional supervisory responsibilities in addition to his current responsibilities. He is our college leader in governance, accreditation, strategic planning, assessment, institutional research, and information technology. In an environment in which statistical evidence is increasingly important for assessment and accountability, Rick Fox has become our college's primary gatherer and interpreter of data. I strongly support his appointment as Vice President for Institutional Effectiveness.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you to continue on with the other two candidates.
Next, it gives me great pleasure to present for your consideration Mr. Tom Freibel for the position of Vice President for Enrollment Management. Tom has thirty-five years of experience in the areas of enrollment management and student affairs. He's been a dean and assistant vice president of enrollment management at Kingsborough for the past ten years, and was previously Associate Vice President for Enrollment Management and Dean of Admissions for ten years at Merrymount Manhattan College. Before arriving at Merrymount, he held numerous enrollment management and student affairs positions at his alma mater of Hofstra University. At Kingsborough, Tom established the country's first single-stop center, and then assisted other CUNY colleges in doing the same. In addition, his enrollment management expertise consists of strategic enrollment planning, student recruitment, financial aid, student retention, marketing, and advertising, and establishment of campus one-stop enrollment centers. As we consider new programs to counter an increasingly challenging recruitment environment, Tom's expertise becomes even more critical to the college. He's an important member of my senior management team, and I strongly support his appointment to Vice President.
Thank you. And last, your final?
And last up is a new senior staff member for Kingsborough. It gives me great pleasure to recommend to you Mr. Ed Rios. Ed received his AAS degree in Marketing Management from New York City Technical College, and his bachelor degree in Psychology from the College of New Rochelle. Ed started his CUNY career at the CUNY Graduate School and University Center in 1986 as a purchasing agent, and assisted the Budget Director with the doctoral studies budgets. In 1997, he left the Graduate Center to become the Director of Purchasing and Contracts for the City College of New York. His responsibilities also included managing the college's OTPS budget. In 2000, Ed became the college's Budget Director and Business Manager. In 2007, Ed left City College to become the Director of Finance and Business Services for the College of Staten Island. In 2009, he was promoted to the position of Assistant Vice President for Finance and Business Services. Kingsborough recently conducted a thorough search for a new Vice President for Finance and Administration, a position that has been filled with interim appointments since 2013. The result of that search was my selection of Mr. Rios, and I strongly and enthusiastically support his confirmation by the Board of Trustees.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve all three of these outstanding candidates?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. And once again, thank each one of you gentlemen for your new and continued service to the university and to the college, would you like to have a brief comment?
Sure, I would like to thank the Board and the Chancellery and President Herzak for this vote of confidence and the opportunity to take on additional responsibilities, and just also put in a special thanks to my long-term friend and mentor, David Gomez.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone, too, especially President Herzak. I think any of us would want to be acknowledged like this after only working with someone for a few months, so thank you very much. And on a personal note, it's just been a couple of really good weeks at CUNY, because my office celebrated my ten-year anniversary a few weeks ago, and my son just finished his freshman year at John Jay and heard that he got into the honors program on Friday. So we're going to be celebrating this week, especially up to tonight.
Congratulations.
So thank you all very much.
That's great.
I also want to thank President Herzak for this tremendous opportunity to work at Kingsborough Community College. I'm really looking forward to working with his team, and I'm looking forward to assisting the students, faculty, and staff at Kingsborough. I'd also like to thank, at this moment, President Fritz, the College of Staten Island, for allowing me to work there for the past seven years, and I've enjoyed the relationships there.
Thank you very much.[1535.33][1535.33][applause]
Madam Chair and members of the Board, if I might take one more moment to publicly thank Mr. Bill Corente. Bill has stepped in for the past academic year as the interim Vice President of Finance and Administration, so thank you, Bill. I appreciate it.[1559.33][1559.33][applause]
We'll now have two appointments at Queens College.
Madam Chair, as members of the committee, delighted to introduce two new members of the president's cabinet at Queens College. The first is Elizabeth Henry, Betsy Henry, who will become the Vice President for Academic Affairs and Provost. She is no stranger to Queens College. She's had a very distinguished career for the past twenty-five years in the college, beginning as a faculty member in the Economics Department, and then becoming the Department Chair, the Dean of the Division of Social Sciences, then the Acting Chief Operating Officer, and for the past two years, the Acting Provost for, in the college. A scholar of great credentials, with degrees from Princeton and Duke, where she got her PhD, and a stellar publishing record, and a great record of service to Queens College and CUNY. So we're very fortunate to have her assume this role, and I have been particularly privileged in the past year to have Betsy's support and guidance as I have navigated my rookie year as President of Queens, and I want to thank her for all her help and support in that process. And I also would like to introduce, while I have the floor, someone also well-known to the CUNY family, and is Richard Alvarez, who we would like to appoint as our first Vice President for enrollment and student success at Queens College. In this position, Richard will be overseeing enrollment, student success, and retention areas, and marketing, which we feel would allow us to continue to have robust enrollment in the college and be able to ensure that our students continue to graduate in time in the tradition of Queens College. Richard is eminently qualified to do this. For the past twelve years, he's been right here at the central office as the Director of Admissions, doing that work with incredible success and integrity. And even though for many of us it's hard to imagine him in a life outside of CUNY, before he joined us, he was, he also had a very distinguished career at Pace University, where he rose to the ranks to become also the Director of Admissions. So we're energized that this team will be working together with the rest of the Queens College team, and I'm very proud to present them to you for your approval.
Well, I will just take a chair's point of privilege and say, it's my pleasure meeting Elizabeth today, and I'm weeping to, I'm congratulating Richard on his appointment, but I'm weeping because Richard knows that I called him to, and he's always been there for all of my pet projects all around the city of introducing CUNY to any number. He is of organizations and programs throughout the city, and he has just always been there. So congratulation on your appointment, but I'm weeping for all of the, we will miss you in all of those projects. So with that, I'd like to call for a motion for approval. So, with that, I'd like to call for a motion for approval. Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any comments?
Yes, just a brief comment, Madam Chair. I've done a lot of work with the Provost over the last year on a number of projects that she's been involved in and she has exhibited, I mean, great wisdom, proactiveness, and thorough follow-through in all of the things that she's done, specifically with campus-wide projects focusing on Brazil and South Africa and now the Silk Road and also with external organizations. So, I think it's really great that I can see her taking this leadership while, especially at the time when our rookie president was learning the ropes, she really was able to hold things through and, you know, and so I just want to comment on that and also, so I want to say that, and also, do we have to approve Richard Alvarez? I don't think that we should allow a resource like that to just go to one college.
It's an integrated, integrated university. Integrated university.
I sort of, I already tried to stop the motion from coming through the floor earlier today, but congratulations, we'll stop joking, but I think you understand.
I'm sorry, we were joking.
I did extract a pledge that he would continue to visit all of the campuses, so you're going to have all of the high school, you just understand when he's not there, he's out still doing some of his work around the city, so.
That's out of title work, I don't know.
He'd be recruiting for Queens.
Okay, so with that, do we have a motion to approve?
We had a motion, but we need a vote.
Oh, now, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries and with all sincerity, congratulations. And congratulations to you, you're getting just two outstanding candidates to continue your work, so.
Give them a chance to.
I guess I'll give them a chance to speak now. Elizabeth, would you like to speak?
It's been my privilege to serve Queens College and CUNY in a variety of roles. We have wonderful students and faculty and I've enjoyed all of them. I've really enjoyed the chance to work with President Matos this last year and I'm honored to be chosen for the position.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to say, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve the university over the last 13 years. I could not do the job that I do with my team if it weren't for the support of the Board and the CUNY Chancellery because it is a fabulous place to work and I want to thank President Matos Rodriguez for the opportunity to continue my work at the university, trying to bring the best students we can to the university, but also to Queens. I will continue to do my work to reach out to every student who's interested in attending the university, as I am a product of Hunter and Baruch, so now I have a third institution that I could remain loyal to, but I do thank everybody. And Jay, a special thanks to you for continuing to open new doors to me and my team as we enhance the work of the university and to Vice Chancellor Dobrin for your continued support of our reorganizing and moving forward. So, thank you very much for all the work and I will never leave the CUNY Welcome Center.
Well, thank you. Is that in the minutes? We got that, and thank you again, congratulations. I will now ask Kenneth Norris from the Office of Academic Affairs to present items 1C9 and 1C10, two appointments of faculty members requiring a waiver of the bylaws.
Kenneth next and then Kenneth.
Okay, Jennifer, you can stay there.
This is true, a point, Dr. Joanne Wipajewski as the Bell Azeller Visiting Professor of Political Science at Brooklyn College. Ms. Wipajewski is the former editor of the nation and the author of many articles and editor of many books. Despite her lack of a PhD, she is an excellent addition to the college and provides a unique learning experience, will provide a unique learning experience to the students at Brooklyn. Dr. Kaufman, oh, sorry, Dr. Wesson has an impressive research agenda that she has established outside of the academy and at the NSF and the Dow Chemical. She will be an excellent choice to guide the research agenda of the engineering faculty at CCM1.
And you can continue with the second?
That was the second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Long day. May I have a motion for approval both in, in second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motions carry. Thank you. Now, President Robb, will you present items 1C11?
Thank you so much. I'm very pleased today to present to the committee for our approval as our new Acting Provost, Dr. Lon Kaufman. As many of you know, there's wonderful good news for the CUNY system in that our beloved Provost, Peter Rabenowitz, will become now the Provost of this system and while it was sad for her to lose her, we're so happy she's still part of this family and also very pleased that in many of the searches that were taking place in CUNY, including the Provost's search, we were able to identify a really extraordinary candidate in Dr. Lon Kaufman. He has 30 years of experience at a stellar public university, the University of Illinois, primarily at its Chicago campus, most recently in 11 years in the Provost's office, three years as Provost and eight years as Vice Provost, where he oversaw an extremely varied and expansive portfolio with a very, very large budget, including a medical school and hospital. So, his experience in systems is really superb and his focus on the areas that Hunter's really promoting within its strategic plan, primarily research, are clearly demonstrated in his work, both himself as a very well-funded biologist and his work in his portfolio at UIC. He has also been as devoted to student success as he has been to his faculty and to the research endeavor, which is somewhat unusual in somebody with such a large and senior administrative position. He has been the dean of an honors college and as Provost started one of the most successful new high schools in Chicago in concert with the mayor's office in trying to address some of the urban educational problems. He's also somebody who's very committed to civic engagement and to cities, as shown by that work in Chicago and a host of other activities over the years. And mostly, I think, we're very excited to welcome a son of CUNY home. Lon attended Brooklyn College and transferred to graduate from Queens College, as did his wife. We're proud to report that his brother went to Hunter and he really does come home to New York because he attended Stuyvesant High School and Dr. Kaufman and I decided we would move forward in our academic partnership once we determined that we were probably at the worst eighth-grade dances when I was at Hunter High School and he was at Stuyvesant and they were, they required the nerds to try to have a social life. So, we think we met there first and are very excited about becoming partners together as, with your approval, he joins us as our Acting Provost.
Because the cameras are rolling, I won't ask the question. So, I will move forward with the, may I have a motion for approval? It's been moved in, may I have a second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries and thank you for joining us here at the City University and would you like to address this?
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to come back home and contribute to my alma mater. Had it not been for the City University, I don't think I would have gone to college. I don't think my wife would have gone to college and I don't think my brother would have gone to college. Of course, he was the smarter one and chose Hunter College. This is alma mater. This is really terrific, so thank you very much for welcoming me back into the Hunter family.
Well, thank you and welcome to the City University. Thank you. You have a number of informational items there, which I will bear for your brief, for your review. In lieu of a report from Vice Chancellor Waters, I would like to take this time to update the committee on the work, on the CUNY Defined Contribution Investment Oversight Task Force. I would like to introduce to the committee Mr. Jeffrey Levy of Kamic Retirement, Inc., the consultants that have been looking at our employee pension investment plan. He will report on some preliminary findings and say of some potential actions that the university might consider taking. And I'd like to extend a special thank you to my comrade-in-arms trustee, Martell. It's always fun when Terry and I are in the same room.
Oh, yeah.
So, but it really has been a joy working with Terry and the committee on this very, very important task, so, and under the able guidance of Kamic, so let's do a show now.
Thank you very much. I'm Jeff Levy, I'm the managing partner of Kamic Retirement and you may know that several, few years ago, the government changed significantly a lot of the issues associated with retirement plan, more oversight, more focus on fees, et cetera. We began working with the task force several months back with the goal to really identify best practices, what features of the program could be improved, whether it's investments through different investments, lower fees, et cetera, with a goal to really educate the committee on what the options were or are today and what the best practices would be to help minimize fees and therefore improve the retirement readiness of the participant in the future. So, I'm going to ask Mike Webb, my colleague here, to just briefly walk you through some of the initial findings and focus of the task force over the next several months.
Thank you, Jeff. A lot of the present state can best be described as, a lot of good things are being done, yet there's a lot of opportunity. The marketplace is constantly evolving, especially with respect to fees and overall retirement readiness of participants. So, we did a thorough review of the present status and the status is such that everything looks good, but there are opportunities, especially in the area of fee equality, some participants do pay more than others, trying to level that playing field a little bit so that all participants pay the same low fee. And to also work on benchmarking what we're doing with other peer institutions and making sure that CUNY's retirement program is best in class. With respect to possible future state considerations, there's going to be a look at best-in-class in terms of vendors. There are multiple vendors right now. The trend in the marketplace is to consolidate to whether a few providers or single provider, so that will be strongly looked, strongly looked at and considered. Best-in-class investments, the trend in the marketplace is a positive one, is to generally reduce the array to a more manageable array of funds, as you as 20 to 25, as long as all asset classes are covered, that is going to be strongly considered. And in addition, with regard to fees, the marketplace is, it's almost, at this point, it's like when you, when you buy a computer and it becomes outdated, a personal computer after a while, that's how the fee marketplace is. So, really trying to stay ahead of the curve in terms of not only the fees themselves, but the structure of the fees and how to get those fees down relative to the services provided and also looking at an education policy, to really look at participants, not only when they retire, but in advance of retirement, are they meeting their goals? Because if they're not meeting their goals, then they're not going to be able to retire and that would be, you know, obviously that would not be a positive outcome.
I think it should be pointed out that many of the features that we're talking about here today, you may be reading in the press about the behavioral finance, et cetera, how there's been much more analysis today of how individuals are educated, how they change their investment focus, if they better understand impact of fees, et cetera. So, all of that is going into this review in order to not only follow best practices, but understand the participant, how to deliver information and how to incent them to participate themselves and save towards their own retirement.
Then the last thing, of course, you're probably eager to hurry timeline and the timeline of this is within, to act, try to act on some of the information that we received within the 2015 to 2016 academic year. The primary, again, the primary drivers are going to be fees relative to services, investments, and the overall participant experience, i.e. are we helping participants as best we can to achieve the goal of a secure retirement?
Thank you. You'll notice in the presentation a number of recommendations and tasks that we're looking at and I want to thank Kamic because they really have been assisting us in looking at a huge program and the committee will be working over the summer to consolidate some of our recommendations, with he's saying with the goal and objective of making sure that we offer our employees the best-in-class opportunities with the goal of that they can retire. And so, with that, I'd like to, like to very much thank you. I think it's very important, I was reading an article and I guess it's the Clarion where they were talking about what the role of the advisors are with regard to retirement and whether we're supposed to be giving advice or merely, so I think we're looking on, at the opportunity of giving people the best information so that they can make the best decisions, is what I would, would say our response is. So, are there any questions about the, the report or the work of the committee?
Good, good work.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, the committee has met almost monthly, not, you know, a little bit longer than once a month, but it's been a very active group.
Yeah.
Diligently working our way through lots of stuff.
Yeah, and our next steps will be meeting with the unions and to give them information before we start trying to make and changing some, making some, I think, some very worthy, cost-effective changes. So, we will be having additional meetings with, with, with interested parties to make sure that everybody understands why some of the, some of the actions will be taken and, of course, we'll have to meet with the executives and Mr. Dobrin to make sure that we can implement some of these things. So, if there are no additional questions.
Can I just make one clarification? There was a reference to a committee, it's really a task force, it's not a, it's not a committee. It's not, it's not a committee and, and just for information, we have met already with DC 37 regarding some of the things that we're talking about doing and we've also met with the PSC and we've gotten positive feedback at both meetings.
Thank you, thank you for the update. Any other questions, comments, there being none? Is that Madam, is that the end of my agenda? May I have a motion for?
Oh, you can't quit already, if somebody made a clock.
Thank you, this is my longest meeting.
You stay.
May I have a, may I have a motion for adjournment?
Some move.
Second, it's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you very much for your attention.